Welcome to the December 3rd Planning Board meeting on a snowy evening. We have three Planning Board members who have opted to Zoom. I kind of thought about it myself. But Gary and I are here, and first on the agenda tonight, we have, we're going to review the minutes, and after that, we have a special permit for a driveway. And then we have a sign request, and then a Form A, and then some updates. So let's start with the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes for October 15?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Okay, so Gary has moved to approve. I second that. We need to do the roll call vote. I'll start. I, Kate.
I, Gary.
I, Liz.
Nancy.
There we go.
Approved, Nancy?
Yes, I'm sorry, I.
Okay. Eric, when we have people on Zoom and in the room, we need to do a roll call vote. So if you can just approve or not, whatever you.
Approve.
Okay, great. So next up, we have a special permit request for a driveway located at 38A Glendale Road. I'm just going to declare the public hearing to be open. A few of the following procedures that we follow. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. One person speaking at a time, please. All discussion through the chair and in voices that are clearly audible to all meeting attendees. Civility encouraged, and yes, that's it. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the, up to the board, introduce yourself, and so that the audience and people on Zoom can see you. All right, so at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Gagnon? Oh, there's no one presenting for.
He's doing.
Oh, Mr. Gagnon is doing it? Okay, all right. Could you introduce yourself, please?
We can't.
You're on mute? We cannot hear you. Can someone text to let him know that he's, message him on?
How about?
Okay, so we missed the beginning. If you can start again, please.
My name is Robert Gagnon. I'm the owner of 38A Glendale Road.
Okay, would you like to describe what you're doing?
This, this house was bought by me a few months ago, though the house was built in 2017. It has a permit occupancy. On the permit occupancy, there's a statement that says that actually the driveway was never, not only permitted, but there was never a permit applied for it. I think what happened, though I can't prove it, is that David Lipinski plowed, or I mean graded, a driveway into that lot and then sold it to Mr. Timothy Martin. I'm aware that Timothy Martin wasn't completely cooperative with the town of Stockbridge. By the way, I was born in Stockbridge. I went to the school that you are now sitting in, probably. So, so what I would like to do is to do everything correctly with this hot house. So I filed for a special permit. I filed for a curb cut permit with Ms. Zanetti. And so that's all in the works, and I guess I want to know whether or not you, the board, is okay with that driveway. I feel the driveway is viable. Otherwise, I wouldn't have bought the house. There's a, it does not do a ski jump thing into the road. It parallels the road, and at the last minute, you have to turn to get onto Glendale Road. There is a sort of a parking area down at the bottom, as shown on the plan that I submitted. It doesn't seem poorly done, although it does need to be maintained, and I will maintain it. But before I do that, I would like to get input from you on what you want me to do.
Okay, so as part of the sign by law, we have input from our police chief and our fire chief. And I'm just going to read what I have from both of them. From the police chief, Chief Fenelly, he responds, in response to Jennifer's inquiry, I don't have a problem with this. And then from Chief Garofoli, he's a little bit more expansive, and he writes, Hi Jennifer, I evaluated the proposed driveway at 38A Glendale Road and found that in order for the fire department vehicles to safely access the property from both directions, the three large trees at the road's edge should be removed. The trees I am referring to are the two trees located to the right of the driveway, as you face it from Glendale Road, and the one tree to the left of the driveway. Due to the steep angle of turn at the end of the driveway, fire department vehicles would need to enter the oncoming lane of traffic on a blind corner to negotiate the turn where the trees, if where, if the trees were removed and the curb cut extended another 20 to 30 feet to the right, we could safely enter the driveway at a more gradual turn angle. So that's the input that we have from them. Unless you have anything more you'd like to say, Mr. Gagnon, I'm going to see if there are any questions from the board for you.
I could say that there are wetlands to the right-hand side of that driveway, and depending on how far the curb cut goes, it, it could affect a sensitive area. As far as the trees are concerned, if that is what is required, I will cut them down, although those are at least 200-year-old trees, and I am a person interested in conserving nature. For example, I don't want to pave the driveway. I want to put gravel in because that is a more correct thing to do.
Well, I think it's a recommendation, so we'll let the board weigh in here and see what their thoughts are. Any, any comments from the board?
Is that a question?
Yep.
Would it be really difficult to make the driveway into a 10-degree? You know, to make it more to the bylaw?
Okay, so, so I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm not an expert at all, so I'll just say that it looks to me like if the grade had been 10%, that I wouldn't have had to ask for a special permit. I do not see how it can be made 10%. You probably could make it 13%, but that's still 3% more than, than permitted. I would like to say that all of the steep parts are not near Glendale Road. They are further into the property. I, I had no idea what the board would be concerned about, because I'm a novice. I was guessing that they were worried about people losing control of an automobile and going down a steep slope and going into Glendale Road. That would be horrible. But that can't, that is not the case at all here, because the steep part is quite parallel to Glendale Road. And, and in fact, one of the things that would stop a car going into the road is in fact one of those large trees.
I don't, I don't think anyone was concerned about cars going into the road. I know from your application that you, that you took that into consideration when, when doing this. The question I wanted to ask you, though, is, is there any possibility of making the curb cut, in other words, the entrance to the driveway from the road, any wider without taking the trees down?
Well, I think that, that, I think that is absolutely possible. Those trees, I think, are close to 16 feet apart from each other. And, and I'd be perfectly happy to do that.
Nancy?
Hey, is a curb cut is a selectmen issue, correct? Not a planning board issue?
Right.
I actually.
Or Highway Department.
I actually didn't, really wasn't aware that this property needed a curb cut, but I was told by Teresa that they went ahead and requested that. So that was, that's outside the planning board.
I thought so.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're just here for the driveway request. And so, you know, that's, that's what we're, Liz, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, if you do, if you are able to do the 16 feet, would that meet the requirement for the chief, the fire chief?
Well, he's not, I don't know, he's not here, but you know, maybe what we could do is, is just recommend that, that Rob work with the, talk to the fire chief and work with him on this, so that he can move forward.
I think given the size of the trees and everything, I can understand his concern with, with taking them down. I would think that if you could get to a 16-foot-wide entryway, that that would be pretty good.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable to me, too. Gary, any comments?
I agree. I think that if you can get to the 16 feet and not take the trees down, I think that would be preferable.
They are beautiful trees, so.
Hasn't everybody actually gone there and looked at it?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we all, I think most of us have, so, yeah. Now, if there's no, nothing more from the board, is there anybody here or on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition, or is there anyone here who just has any comment at all?
My name's Alan Papsken. I live at 40 Glendale Road, and I have no objection whatsoever.
Okay, great, okay. If there's nothing more, I'd like to have a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, so the board can deliberate. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, so it sounds to me like if, if Mr. Gagnon can get this to 16 feet, we have a deal. How does everybody feel about that?
Yeah, as close as he can to 16 feet, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so does somebody want to make a motion to approve this request? For the. I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I second. Roll call vote, I, Kate.
I, Gary.
I, Liz.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, Eric.
Congratulations, you have your driveway permit.
Thank you. I will, I guess, communicate with Jennifer, is that correct, on, on whatever procedure I need to do next?
Yep. Sounds good.
So I suppose I should sign off, yes? So thank you very much, and everyone have a great holiday.
So Rob, Rob, you're done. There's nothing more you need to do, okay?
Unless you want to watch, it could get exciting.
Really?
Time TV here.
I'll say, I'll say good evening and thank you.
Starbridge on a snowy night, be glad you're not here.
Right.
Actually, it's very, very pretty here right now.
I know, I've seen the photos. So thank you and good evening.
And the Christmas tree is lit, so. All right, good evening. Okay, so next up, we have a sign request for 3 Elm Street, and Roxanne McCaffrey and Diane Rice are here to present. Do you want to come on up?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. I didn't. Well, we might need another copy. We could give Gary a copy. So we have one copy. So that's the cleaned up copy, and then I gave Kate when I came in. There's also a mock-up that they did, that's.
I'm going to share that.
Yeah.
In a second.
Photograph. Basically, this is 30-inch by 30-inch sign. Now I can hear.
Was it off?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, did you guys hear?
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so.
Did you guys see this?
Okay.
See him at all?
All right, so can we start? We're going to start again.
No.
We had a little glitch.
A little glitch here. We lost you, our planning board members. So Roxanne is going to repeat. She's going to repeat what she just said. Can you just, someone wave so that I know you're hearing? Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. So basically, I think everybody saw with the permit, we had like the rough draft, which really hasn't changed. This is a 30-inch by 30-inch sign to be posted on either side of an existing hanging sign board, where Chance Gallery used to have their sign. Pretty straightforward, pretty simple, and I think we're within the bylaw in terms of the square footage, so that's it.
And what's, what's the height of the existing sign post?
It's on the permit, I believe. I thought I had it on here. I don't know, it's the existing sign post, it's been there. There's nothing any higher than it was before. I thought I measured it, and I thought I put it on here, but I may have missed that.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the board? Any comments?
No.
Nancy?
Just a question, is it basically the same size as his sign was?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so this is one of those situations where technically, we've had this before, where technically, it's, it's there. It's been there for a while, and it predates our sign by law. And it doesn't actually meet the current sign by law, and there is not pre-existing non-conforming language there. But that said, the board has previously, that being said, the board has previously approved this type of scenario. So, you know, I, I understand that is, is definitely not intuitive to take a situation like this and say, well, you know, you have to redo the whole thing. So that's my comment. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I, in reading the sign by law, I, I find very little about freestanding signs. If, and I'm just, I'm just mentioning this because of, it doesn't really seem to be addressed. So if I look at permanent signs in the, in the business zoning district, it basically says for a single building with multiple establishments, each establishment is permitted one sign not to exceed 16 square feet in an area, provided that all such signs shall be attached flat against the wall of the building, and no sign shall project over a parapet wall. For exception, providing for one projecting sign, see basically below, 6.8, 0.9, 0.8, 0.3, which says instead of not more than one wall sign per lot allowed by the previous, one projecting sign not to exceed four square feet in area, subject to the following requirements. And then the following requirements are all about a projecting sign. Now, there is a projecting sign that's down the alleyway that basically just tells you where the door is. And it's, it, that would certainly, it certainly appears that it meets all code in that it's above 10 feet high, and, and it's only about a square foot or something like that. All it says is gallery. But there's nothing here that says that another sign is permitted. I, I realize that another sign has been there for a long time, and I'm, and I'm not objecting to that. I'm just bringing it, bringing it to the board's attention that there's no language here for that. The other question, and of course, it's four square feet they're talking about as well, but that's, again, for the projecting sign. For the existing Chance Gallery sign, actually, the, the, the board that's hanging there now, which I think all the writing is faded away from it, the board that's hanging there now is actually a little larger than 30 by 30. Are you planning to replace that board with, with your double-sided sign? Or are you planning to attach a sign to each side of that hanging board?
We're going to, what we're planning on doing is attaching one on each side of that existing board. And when I have looked at this sign board, it looks to me like the Chance Gallery was also affixed.
Interesting, okay. Did you hear that, Eric?
I did. That's, 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 that's all I have.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just, I'm just, it's not something that's really addressed in the current sign by law.
Yeah, it's kind of, well, it's also ties to the question that Nancy brought up earlier in the fall about the sign by law.
Yeah.
And, you know, she had a really good idea about addressing that, and I hope that, I hope you got my email, Nancy, connecting you with Michael, because Michael is, is interested in working on that, but, so. Yeah, so I think that, I mean, where you, Roxanne, where you put, you're not, in terms of the projecting sign, would you agree to just leave that? No, no changes?
It was there, we're not changing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you're fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, okay.
As long as people can find the door, we're happy.
Okay, all right. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept this presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, I, Kate.
I, Gary.
I, Liz.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, Eric.
Carl's here, too.
Carl, can you speak?
He's muted. You're muted.
Here we go. Hi, Carl, yes.
Congratulations. Good luck with your store.
All right, thank you.
Very exciting.
Yes, thank you.
It'd be more exciting if we get the sign.
Yes.
Hopefully for the Friday.
Well, you know, you need from us, so.
The Today Show is coming, I think, Thursday. Can I show you?
Thursday night.
Thursday, yes. I was like, wow.
Yeah.
Nice.
That's like.
You're going to be out there?
Not at 6:00 AM.
Are you going to carry a lot of wool, or?
Yes.
Well, eventually, yeah.
All high-end, we've already started. And it's, everything that we have in there is exquisite.
Now, I have my first project right there.
She showed me when I walked in. She, scarf.
Awesome. Very good.
Very difficult.
Expect your stitch. All the calls we've had with people who have trouble.
But we'll have like commercial yarns, but we also, just so everybody knows, we have items on consignment, and so we're trying to highlight local artisans. So we have local yarns as well.
So if I make more of those, you're going to sell them for me?
Yeah, sure. Come in and talk.
The local women who sheep herm is incredible, and we have that, they hand dye. It's just absolutely exquisite.
I can't wait to see.
Yes, thank you. We lost our yarn shop in Lenox.
And Roxanne, you worked there, yeah.
Yeah, and I lost my job.
She went to Williamsburg in the historic village.
But you have all that, so you have all that experience, which will help you.
Exactly, yeah.
All right.
So anyway, thank you all.
Welcome.
Yes, all out there.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I said, two local girls.
Yeah.
You could name it, that, two local girls.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yep, good night. All right, so let's see. Next, we have a Form A request. This is for Swan Real Estate Trust at 23 Cherry Hill Road, and with us today, we have Kelly Granger Parsons Associates, Associates, and your name, I'm sorry.
Mike Parsons.
Mike Parsons, yes, of course. Okay, so. You know, I really have, the first thing I want to say is, before you start, is I have so much trouble reading these. Can you provide like large copies?
I got them.
But when you submit it, can you?
Yeah, I filed.
You missed it.
Oh, okay, I missed it.
That's okay. No, I, I absolutely understand. I absolutely understand, and of course I will watch and be, see what.
Thank you.
What's happening. So just in a quick way of, of back down. And you.
You weren't here before.
I was.
Yeah.
I was here in January to create this parcel that was going to be, this parcel that was going to be conveyed to Linda Barbadoro's daughter Amelia.
Can you get, help get me oriented?
Cherry Hill, Cherry Street, Cherry Hill, Swans, the house is across the street.
Okay, so this was, which parcel was created in January?
This parcel.
And it goes like, it's an L?
Yes.
And that's what gave it the frontage?
Right, but it's not a buildable lot anyways.
Oh, okay.
Yep, does not constitute a legal building.
Okay.
And it's to be conveyed to Barbadoro.
Okay, and, and Barbadoro is out here?
That. Barbadoro owns this residence.
So this is the lot line for Barbadoro?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yep, and that, that all existed. That, that existed.
This, and this were combined?
This and this are going to be combined.
Oh, that's what you're asking for tonight?
Nope.
Okay.
And can I ask, you know, what's the overall purpose of this?
Okay, so the Swans had given Linda Barbadoro, the mom, and her partner Nick, the, the right to purchase the land behind the house that they live in. And so that property is, was now being sold to the guy that bought the big house. was now being sold to the guy that bought the big house. Um, and Linda, Linda and Nick wanted to exercise their right of first refusal and and buy what they were entitled to buy. When I came in January, I I couldn't do everything that we wanted to because there was a problem with the title to the piece that I'm gonna show you tonight, which joins this piece.
Ah, okay.
Okay, so there was a, there was a title problem. And um, it's taken them eleven months to get the title problem squared away, and now it is, and they wanna move the project forward.
So, does this, can you line this up?
Yes.
It does. It lines up, they're to a, they're a different scale.
Mm-hmm.
But this three ninety-five, this three ninety-five here, this is the same line. So this piece is just gonna go up to here. This was the Swan Real Estate Trust line. And this side of it, it was the estates of Clover and Nick. And the Swan Realty Trust was a different entity.
Okay.
And title was bad.
So this is being joined?
That's been joined, and it's all gonna be one piece.
Okay, all right. And you have, the existing frontage was all okay anyway?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep, that was all, yep. So there's no road frontage, it's not a buildable lot. It states on it that uh, it's it's not a buildable lot, and it's to be conveyed to Barbadoro.
Okay.
So where's, Charlie, where's the, um, is there access to this? Is it parcel C we're talking about?
Yes, it's it's parcel C that we're talking about.
So are they gonna go through Lindis?
Yeah, it's gonna be, well, it's gonna become part of Lindis.
Oh, okay.
Property here, so. This line
It's just that it's a different name.
This line and this line
Yeah.
Are the same line.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, and this, this line was the line between Swan Real Estate Trust and Clover and Nick. And and so we couldn't apply to you to do this all in January.
Yeah.
Title had to get straightened out.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. So it's all gonna be Lindis and and um, uh, well, it's gonna be Linda's daughters.
Yeah.
Yeah, because she has title to, to the house.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Okay, any, any other questions?
No, just that I know that there's a lot of bureaucracy that is getting straightened out with the uh, with the former Swan estate and uh, and and uh, you know, I mean, I I feel like this seems like, you know, part of the homework.
It is, it is. Crossing the i's and dotting the t's.
Yeah. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'd second that.
Okay, roll call vote, I Kate?
Hi Gary.
Hi Liz.
Hi Nancy.
Hi Eric.
Hi Carl.
Perfect.
All set.
Thank you. So should I leave the Mylar with?
Uh, yeah, we've got just the two of us here, so. So we'll need, um, how many need to sign?
Yeah, I have four out of seven.
Great. Okay, so we'll need two of you to come down to the town hall to sign.
Where would that be?
The town hall?
No, I know where the town hall is. It's a big place where where where
It is, it's a brick building.
The buildings, building inspector's office. So.
How many of these do you have?
I have four of those and the Mylar. I only need the Mylar back.
Right, yeah.
So um,
No, I'm gonna go get a pen, just, oh, you got one?
I got one. I never want to live with four, meeting with an unsigned, unsigned plan for lack of a pen. So uh, well, after getting signed, I just have a
This is mine, Eric?
No, we need one. I need four of them.
Pardon my ignorance, but has Stockbridge's done anything about accessory dwelling units?
Well, we ha- actually have um, wording in our bylaw existing. And um, but you know, we're monitoring um, what we're getting from the state. We're gonna talk about that next, if you don't hang out.
Yeah.
Actually, well, because I I had a Stockbridge resident
Yeah, we're talking about that next.
In touch with me that wanted, a year ago, that wanted to her, and I had to tell her she didn't have enough road frontage to do it.
Yes, yes.
But um, now she can, she can do an ADU.
Yeah, that's up next on the agenda.
I'll, I'll hang for a little bit.
Here's your pen.
Thanks. Oh, no, that's not mine.
Oh, I asked you to listen.
No, I said it's mine.
Oh.
It's mine.
You can sound anything on this.
Yeah.
That's why I worked so long.
I will put, you signed the Mylar with the
I did, sir. It's good.
It works.
Okay.
You have your own pen.
Oh, no, this is Mike's pen.
You got
These are nice.
I have lots.
You ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all set?
Yeah.
All right, so next up, we have that discussion, um, update slash summary on the Affordable Homes Act, um, impacts to short term rentals that they use. Um, so, um, I have been monitoring this and um, I had signed up for the email um, from the state, from the um, Living Communities Agency. And so far, um, other than the webinar that they hosted in early November, um, there hasn't been any communication. Um, I was in touch because of that. I thought, well, maybe I fell off the list. I was in touch with um, uh, Gabrielle from Senator Mark's office, Gabrielle Hansen from Senator Mark's office. And she's been quite helpful, and mainly, what I wanted to know was, should we expect usually um, with these uh, acts, these, in this case, the Affordable Homes Act, the rubber hits the road with what's known as the um, CMRs, um, Code of, Code of Massachusetts, um, regulations. So, uh, as of today, there, nothing has been issued. Um, she will keep us posted. Uh, we expect that there will, will be regulations that clarify some of the outstanding questions. Um, but so far, we don't have that information. So, um, I understand that um, Lennox has scheduled, they have a special town meeting and that they are working on, they're addressing their short term, I mean, their accessory dwelling unit. Wording at that meeting, what I'm told is that they had, that meeting was previously scheduled already, and that's why they're going ahead with this. Michael does not feel it's necessary for us to schedule a special town meeting to address this at this point, in that we can address it in in May at our regular annual town meeting. So um, um, he would prefer, and I agree with him on this, that we we wait to see if we get um, additional those, those regulations from the state. Um, because otherwise, we're working on wording. Essentially start again. So, um, that's really what I have right now, and I just wanted to, you know, give a brief update on that, but if anybody has any questions or comments, um, you know, please, please, please speak.
Isn't it going into effect on February second?
Yeah, yeah.
And we're not gonna address it before then?
Well, um, you know, basically, Michael doesn't feel, we do have existing wording in our bylaw. And um, he doesn't feel that we are vulnerable, um, given that we have wording in our bylaw. And really, you know, again, the comment is, the state has not issued those regulations. So our option is to start drafting something, but then we get, what happens? We get regulations from the state, and we just have to start all, this is what some other towns in the area have had to do um, when they ushered in ADU bylaws. They now have to go back and redo them. So we kinda dodged that bullet. Um, and my input is that it, you know, we should be following it, and we are. And I encourage you to sign up for those email updates um, on the state website, but um, you know, Michael and I are also following it. So I'm going to be putting this on the agenda for, you know, going forward for a little while, just so that as I get, if, and as I get information, I can bring it, bring it to the board.
Is, is this somehow potentially an issue for the town meeting?
Well, yes, we will need to eventually, you know, update our bylaws, but until the state gives us, you know, additional detail and information, there are a lot of outstanding questions. If you go online and just, you know, take a look, you'll see. In fact, Bill Vogt just forwarded me yesterday uh, information that he got from the fellow with the consultant that the board had worked with previously. You know, with sort of a white sheet with some information and, you know, it's not surprising, there's uh, there's, there are open questions on how this uh, plays out.
The the one specific question I had was regarding the uh, the verbiage about the eighteen hundred square foot limit. Um, I guess it's on a potential addition?
Where'd you get eighteen hundred square feet, Carl?
Nine.
Uh, from the, from, from, from what I was just reading, you know, from the, uh, from the notes here.
No, the, the square footage, the state is, it's nine hundred square feet is the, is the maximum, is the limit.
Oh, okay, I must have missed something, okay.
Which is actually more restrictive than what we have on our, in our bylaw.
Yeah, no, that's not very much.
So, um, you know, it's, it's meant to be an accessory dwelling unit, not, not another house.
Right.
And that was something that the board, this board, you know, didn't actually have consensus on. But clearly, the state sees these as accessory dwelling units, and they're meant to address um, you know, affordable housing needs. So I think probably a lot of people think of that as, well, I'm not gonna go there, so. Um, at any rate, that's, that's really all I have right now. Anything else, Nancy?
No, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Eric?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Good, all right, okay. So moving right along, um, next we have uh, an update on the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, and that falls falls to Liz.
That's me. Lot to talk about. We got, we, we have become, we, we applied with the town of Great Barrington and Egremont for something called the Community Development Block Grant, which we got. And the purpose of it is to fund home repairs focused on older homes, seniors and young families, and they, it can get up to fifty thousand per person. Um, and potentially increasing it to seventy thousand, depending on what needs to be done. In terms of repayment of that money, if they don't sell their home for fifteen years, it is forgiven.
And when does, when, when do those funds become available?
I think they're, I think they're applying for them now. I don't know exactly when they're available, but we already have four or five applications.
And do, so what's, what's the application process like?
You, there's somebody at town hall who has, and I can't, I don't know which name has it, but somebody at town hall has the applications there.
Is that Katie Cardillo, Council on Aging?
I don't know. I doubt, I don't think so, because it's not just for seniors, it's for anybody in need.
Are they, is it posted on the website, the town website?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know how they've handled it. I'm just reporting on this part. I don't know how they're putting it on.
Okay.
And let's see, we've been doing, so we brought in the Housatonic Valley Association to look at um, the Glendale Middle Road project. And we don't have any answers for them yet, but they are, we are gonna be using them to evaluate wildlife corridors, because we really are trying to be very conscious of you know, wildlife and everything that's, you know, that, whatever, wherever we are, we would like to be environmentally conscious. We also, we're trying to identify and retain professional grant writers to handle upcoming applications and explore partnerships with experienced consultants for technical grant components, because none of us are grant writers. It's, it's been a lot of work already, but that part, we're just not gonna be able to do. Um, we're also coordinating with other town boards to collaborate with the Agricultural and Forestry Commission, Conservation Commission, Kambusa Bog Stewership, and we're integrating conservation efforts with affordable housing initiatives. So we're not just focusing on Glendale Middle Road anymore. It, it's a huge project. I'm not sure it's gonna go anywhere, but it was given to, this property was given to us to, to determine whether or not it could be used for affordable housing. But we are looking at, and the man who owned, his name is Hal Coburn, and he owns fourteen Pine Street, which is where the Waldorf School is now. Um, he's, he's, it's on the market. But he, he's also been on the planning board in Otis now for thirty-five years and twenty-five years as the chair, so he's very aware of how ta- towns work and and what would be good. And he would, he's brought it to us, suggesting that this would be a great place for affordable housing. Which is, all the things say to me, absolutely, it's got water, it's got sewer, it's right in town, it's walkable, you know, it can get to a bus, whatever you need to do. Right now, it's got three, I believe it has three um, units already upstairs. But the downstairs and first floor can be converted into multiple units, providing affordable housing. And it might be, it may be, depending on how much it costs, it might be mixed use. But this would certainly be a lower cost per square foot compared to new construction, which roughly is costing between six and eight hundred dollars per square foot. So we've got a building, we've got water, we've got sewer, we've got electric, this is all, sounds all really goo- good to us.
I grew up on this street, so.
Yeah.
It used to be apartments when I was a kid.
Yeah, yeah. So um,
Which was a couple years ago.
Just a couple, Gary.
Because I think I was a kid at about the same times.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a potential for seven, seven to eight of additional affording units on the existing three. And we're talking about offering a mix of studio and loft apartments and suitable for small families. Um, we have, there's an architect that he's been working with, um, is, I think he's looking for more money to, for, for conceptual work. So now we have to explore subsidies on builders' costs or rent differential, coordinating with the town's Community Preservation Committee for possible funding support, which I'm sure we're applying for. And um, let's see. So, so do you have any questions about that part? Yes.
I just would make the comment that that property makes a heck of a lot more sense to me than Glendale Middle Road. So I vote for a focus on that property.
I agree with you one hundred percent, Kate.
I agree too.
I agree too, but I had a question.
Yeah.
So does the town buy that property and then sell the apartments to people? How does that work?
No, we could, so there are a couple of ways. Hal could do it, he owns it, he could do it. We could try and get somebody else to come in and buy it and do it. Or, and we can look for, we're gonna also look for funding, but our problem is, we don't have a lot of money. We need to have CPC in order for, for other pla- you know, for the state government or anybody to want to give us money. They have to see that the town is invested in us, so.
How much, how much might you be looking for from the Community Preservation Act?
I don't know exactly.
So how much is the property on the market for currently?
I think it's one point something mil. It was two, it may be a high one.
I was just concerned that the town would I don't know, you know, the town's not in the business of real estate, so.
Right, and we don't wanna be.
Town buy it.
Right. We don't want to be. And we, we wouldn't be buying it. We're just trying to put, you know, put the pieces together. That's our job.
Inside.
But it takes money to do that too. You know, you have to be able to, buy, buy the architect to do the drawings.
My limited knowledge of the Community Preservation Commission is that they're really, you know, they have almost a backlog of funds for, funding for, for affordable housing. But there haven't been that many demands for that. I mean, a lot comes in for historic preservation, even open space, but, but not so much for affordable housing. You know, I mean, they meet so infrequently. Who's going to that meeting?
Right. So, you know, the thing, the thing.
Well, Liz is, Liz is on the committee.
Yeah.
I am on the committee.
We're meeting Friday at 3:00.
We are Friday at 3 o'clock.
Okay, okay. Good, good, good. All good news. Thank you.
The, the money that we started with was from the CPC. And the thing is, we can't, when something comes up like this, we can't run to you fast, you know, run to this group fast enough in order to get the funds to make it happen. I mean, something like this, if it was a year or two ago, this house would have gone in. So that's, that's the problem we have, looking at the cheaper things. It's that we don't have the funds. We need them built up, so then we can use that as, as leverage in a sense, or just showing interest to the state or to whoever it is, that we have the backing of the town. And that's really what that's about.
Yeah.
Nice.
Um, we did speak to Andrea Lindsay from the Stockbridge Housing Authority at Eden Court. Because we're talking about possibly, is it possible to add more there? But what she did give us an idea of, because we were really trying to find out what current rates were. Right now, vouchers, and I'm not sure exactly which vouchers she's talking about, but I gather they're, they're subsidized. But a studio is about 1,100 a month. And this includes utilities, by the way. A one-bedroom is 1,357, and a two-bedroom is $1,700. And when you look at what's out there, nothing compares.
Nah.
Well, actually, I talked to a local, um, property owner who rents, and his rents were quite a bit lower than that.
Has he done any updates? Part of it, part of it is that, that this would be, well, these are newer buildings as well. You know, Eden Court's not all that old.
And are the utilities included? You have to compare apples to apples.
And the utilities were included. Yes. Yes. So, and it has, so again, the benefits are, it's walkable to town, adequate parking, existing utilities, and it's, and it's a maintained residential neighborhood. So that we're going to, there's going to be another, talking to another architect and see how we, what the, the finance options would be for that, and what would be called capital stack and financing options. And so we need to have some floor plans drawn up and assessing costs.
Yeah, just by, but just by way of curiosity. I mean, like, at Eden Court, where would an addition?
The town, the town owns the, the, um, the dirt road behind it.
Right. Oh, South Hill.
It could be right there.
It's pretty steep.
It's steep, but it's up there. You know, it's, it does flatten out. And maybe Eden Hill would be approached for a little bit of, a little bit of property right there.
Are you working with, are you communicating with Michael on this?
Can Alice?
Yeah.
I'm sure somebody is. I'm just reporting. I am their secretary. I do all, I do the notes. Those are six to eight hours right there. So I let, that's somebody else. I think it's Ranny who's been doing it.
Can you, can you ask about that for me? I'd be interested to know.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so the Housatonic, I've mentioned Housatonic Valley before, that we're going to hopefully hear from the mid to late December on what they've found in terms of wildlife corridors. Um, we have, we are still waiting for a sewer engineering report for Glendale Middle Road, expected somewhat, sometime in January. And the housing production plan was presented to the select, to the select board, and it was approved. So, um, one of the things that has come up is that the Affordable Housing Trust is requesting that the planning board initiate a new master plan within the next year.
Well, that's not going to happen.
No.
Yeah, well, that's what their request is. And it's the one we have. It's outdated.
You could, you know, we just went through, it wasn't an actual master plan, but it was an alternate approach to a master plan several years ago when we had the zoning review committee. And we did what's known as a diagnostic study. And I guess my question for you would be, I understand that doing a master plan update is tied to funding requirements. And I think it, I'd be interested to know specifically what funding requirements are requiring a master plan, because a master plan is a pretty big expense and a pretty big deal.
But are they so old? It's like from the 1970s?
1995.
Okay.
Right. But when we did the diagnostic study, the comment of the consultant who, who did that, and Gary, you were involved in that, was, um, after doing the diagnostic and speaking with a cross-section of residents, he said, his, his comment was, he didn't feel that the, um, people's thoughts on the town had really changed all that much. That they still valued the, um, the sort of the idea of the town, which is, you know, based on a, um, a focused town center with a rural outskirts, sort of like a green necklace. And that, you know, people really valued living in the town for its rural character and its focus downtown. So.
Well, I think that's really an important point. I mean, I mean, are there expiration points on this? I just know that, like, you know, typically, these things are updated every, like, 20 years or something. But, uh, I mean, if we don't have to, maybe we don't.
Yeah, I don't, you know. I mean, I just think, I, you know, I'd like to know what, what funding is requiring the town of Stockbridge to, to go through the whole master plan process. And, you know, someone said to me, well, you can get a really inexpensive master plan if you do it locally. But I don't necessarily think that's the, the right approach here either.
Expensive one like Lennox got.
Can I ask when it was, when the diagnostics were done?
Um, I'll double check the date that it was completed, but I'm going to say it was right before, somewhere around 2018. So I can check that.
They'll ask, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
They know, because I urged the, I urged Fran and Jan to familiarize themselves with it. So they, they should be. And they told me they had, so.
Yeah, I don't think it was just them. I think it's also consultants who we've spoken with who said if you're going to apply for money, that this is too old. Um, that it's just not, it's not up to date enough. Um, and, you know, it wouldn't just be for us. It would be things like sewers and, and, you know, everything, it's covering everything. So anyways, that's good to know.
Yeah. I mean, I'll just give you a little bit of information. When I first went on the board in 2012, when I was totally green and a real newbie, and, um, you know, I was all about the master plans too. Gary, you remember that. And, um, I started looking into it, and I was, you know, met with a fair amount of skepticism. And I started looking into it. And what I found was, um, well, first of all, the first interesting thing was that I contacted the organization had, that, the group that had done our master plan back in the 90s. And they said, oh, yeah, we can update your master plan for you. And when I asked about the price, that was around $210,000. Okay, so, um, so, you know, and, um, then I started, Gary went to a meeting where in Deerfield, and he got some input from folks who said, yeah, oh, yeah, we went through that whole process, and it pretty much just sat on the shelf.
Sat on the shelf.
Sat on the shelf. So I think, you know, it's, it's different in a town like Great Barrington. It's a bigger town, and they have an actual planner on staff who's also, I think, the assistant town manager now. So, you know, he's at their planning board meetings, supporting that planning board. So it's a little different, but that's a, Great Barrington is a much bigger town. I personally don't think you can justify that here in Stockbridge. So, but that's just my opinion. So, um, you know, I imagine since 2012, a master plan has gone up in price too, if you're doing a, a good job. So you might check to see if those, if the diagnostic would, would work for those folks who, who need, um, require it for, for funding.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. I think it might still be posted on the town website too. But I can send you a copy. I have it, have it in my files.
That would be terrific. Thank you. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Any other questions from the board? Nancy's clapping. Okay. So if that's all we have, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
I second.
All in favor, I, Kate?
Hi, Gary.
I, Liz.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, Carl.
Hi, Eric.
Good night.